Reconvene the meeting of November 13th, 2012. Close session.
Thank you Mayor Gardner, there's no close session report this evening.
All right. Please stand with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Hill, followed by the invocation from Mayor Protam Curry.
Please follow as we salute our great nation, our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in an attitude of prayer. Our Father and God, we your children come together at this very special week to give you thanks that we were born in the United States of America and that we celebrate the freedom of democracy. We ask for your wisdom in the decisions which we make today, we ask for compassion for all of our people. We ask that you would build our community, bind us together, and meet the needs of those who are suffering. In your name we pray. Amen.
Well, first we have a presentation of a proclamation in order to the CERT program and volunteers for the National FEMA Award. And I will read the proclamation first. Whereas the City of Newport Beach Fire Department Community Emergency Response Team, CERT Program, was started in 1999 and has been a nationally recognized Department of Homeland Security Training Program since its inception. And whereas the Fire Department CERT Program has over 1,000 trained, certified, and active volunteers, giving it the highest volunteer-to-resident ratio in California. And whereas Newport Beach CERT volunteers work over 10,000 volunteer hours each year to better prepare the community, including homeowners' associations, businesses, and schools in Newport Beach. And whereas the Fire Department Cert Program received the 2012 FEMA Individual and Community Preparedness Award for Outstanding Community Emergency Response Team Initiatives and an honorable mention for volunteer integration, now therefore, I Nancy Gardner, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize and recommend the Newport Beach Fire Department Community Emergency Response Team for their achievement and commitment in preparing the City of Newport Beach for unexpected disasters. We all stand, and may come forward if you all would like, if you can get a real big picture.[206.73][206.73](APPLAUSE).
And the head of the board is? Uh huh. We're all equal, oh, all right. So, nobody has to take this. And, uh...
Say one, two, three. One, two, three.
Does someone like to speak on behalf of the board?
Well, this is a great opportunity.
Karen, would you come to the mic, otherwise people are home to hear you.
Hi, my name is Karen Tringali, and I'm a member of the Newport Beach Community Emergency Response Team. And on behalf of the Board of Directors and all the volunteers who are here tonight, we'd like to thank our own personal leader, Matt Brisboy. And of course, we'd also like to thank the Fire Department Management, city leadership, and city council for the support that they've given this program over the year, over the many years that we've been in existence. It's a tremendous opportunity. As the proclamation stated, we were in quite an esteemed group of community volunteers across the nation, and we are just thrilled and delighted to be recognized for our efforts. And we are really on the brink of doing many more new things, and once we get settled in the new EOC, you'll be hearing more great things about this program. So again, thank you.
Thank you, and certainly, certainly Sandy has, sorry, certainly has, Sandy has shown us the importance of having preparedness and having a group like yours, so we certainly appreciate all the hours you have put in. Thank you very much. And now we're going to have a presentation by Jared Deverde, who is the MPA Director of Communications for the Orange County Vector Control District, and also Michael G. Hirsch, who's the District Manager.
Thank you very, very much, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm going to give you a presentation this evening on vector control activities in the City of Newport Beach, primarily in 2012, and kind of give you a brief overview.
Lights please.
Thank you. I'd like to start with the definition of a vector, just so that we're all referring to the same vector. A vector is any insect or other arthropod, rodent, or other animal of public health significance capable of harboring or transmitting the causative agents of human disease or capable of causing discomfort or injury. Now, with that being said, Orange County Vector Control District is charged with protecting the public health. We are not a pest control agency. There's an important distinction there. We operate under the California Health and Safety Code, and we are charged with these four categories of vectors that we primarily control. Those are mosquitoes, where we provide active control throughout the city, and provide education about resource reduction, mosquito reduction practices, rats and rodent control, we provide quite a bit of education about homeowner responsibility and reduction of rodent populations within the city. We have an active fire ant control program, and we also provide quite a bit of education about flies and filth flies. I'm going to be focusing on the two most important vector-borne diseases in Orange County, and those are West Nile virus and flea-borne typhus. Now, the first you're probably very well familiar with, with the amount of publicity that it's received this year as the cases exploded throughout the Midwest, again, West Nile virus. And the county did see an increase in West Nile virus cases in Orange County as well. So, West Nile virus is transmitted by the mosquito, as you may all know, and I just want to quickly remind you of the mosquito life cycle. The female adult mosquito takes a blood meal, she needs the protein in that blood to produce her eggs, she then generates the eggs, she will lay them on stagnant water, where they hatch in about 24 to 48 hours, they then enter into the larval phase, where they go through four instar of the larvae, and then become pupae. This is that cocoon phase, if you think about it, compared to a caterpillar, where they complete their metamorphosis, transfer into the adult mosquito, and then fly off as flying hypodermic needles all over again. Okay. In Newport Beach, our technicians face a multitude of different mosquito breeding sources. This is quite a diverse city, different topographically, we have now ag area and your newly annexed areas, you have wetland areas, you have urban, dense urban habitats, coastal habitats, wilderness habitats. So, our technicians face quite a challenge in the city. As you can see, from very large sources like fresh wetland marches and tidal inlets to storm drains, very small sources such as flower pots, anything that will hold water for more than 24 to 48 hours is considered a mosquito breeding source. Of note are the foreclosed homes in the past five to six years as foreclosure rates rose. These properties are abandoned, and quickly, the backyard swimming pools and other sources turn into kind of micro lagoons and perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes. In addition, your flood channels, about 1.4 miles of flood channels are inspected and treated throughout the summer. Your street gutters, about 11 and 1/2 miles of street gutters are treated throughout the summer. And our underground storm drain team, they treat about 17 and 1/2 miles of your storm drains throughout the summer as well.
We have to have a lot more than 11 and 1/2 miles of gutters. Why do you only treat 11 and 1/2 miles worth of them?
Those are the ones that have fallen into either disrepair, or the grade and slope has changed over time, so they hold water. They impound water for more than that 48-hour time period, so they have the potential to breed, and/or they are actively breeding, and so they're put on a schedule for treatment. That's a good observation, yes sir. And as I mentioned, your unique habitats, you also have very unusual water impoundment that is very often ecologically and environmentally sensitive, and are home to threatened and endangered species, such as the light-footed clapper rail. Now, these present a number of challenges that we do overcome handily for our technicians to perform the work in these environments. So, as you can see in the image, the back bay is, as you drive by it, ride by it, run by it, walk by it, is a wet environment. It's not always naturally wet. It is challenged by two different types of re-wetting, and that's urban runoff, which is quite constant, and tidal fluctuations. So, that changes our treatment schedule and also the production load of mosquitoes in that environment. All right. The district also conducts aerial surveillance, and Newport, the City of Newport Beach, I'm happy to report, has but 18 pools, out of about 3,000 pools that we treat throughout the country, that are found within the City of Newport Beach. So, you can mark yourself as quite fortunate in that regard.
No, in Texas, they use the airplane a lot for vector control, I understand.
They do, and we use ours to take pictures of sources so we can target them, they use theirs to actually treat for mosquitoes, because they've kind of gotten out of control. I'm going to move on to flea-borne typhus now, and this is one that may be an introduction of a vector-borne disease, or a reintroduction of this disease to this audience. This was previously known as murene typhus, we've re-categorized and reclassified the name as flea-borne typhus to be more descriptive. The suburban transmission cycle, as we know it in Orange County, so flea-borne typhus is transmitted by a bacteria in the cat flea. Cat flea, as their name implies, are found on feral cats. They're also found in a host of other urban backyard wildlife, like opossums and raccoons primarily. So, the transmission cycle, the infected fleas are found in these urban wildlife, they come in contact with your domesticated animals, domesticated animals can pick up these fleas from the urban wildlife and transmit them to humans. Now, that sounds like a very easy transmission pathway. Well, there's an easier cure for this disease as well. It's entirely treatable, it's entirely preventable. How you prevent flea-borne typhus is you must break that bridge. And the bridge is between the, where the fleas pass from urban backyard wildlife to domestic animals. So, if you have your domestic animals on flea-control products, you've broken that bridge of transmission altogether. If you were to be infected with flea-borne typhus, the good news is, unlike West Nile virus, there is a very simple cure. Okay. And the reason why I'm mentioning flea-borne typhus in this meeting today is, if we look at this trend line from 1933, these are each one of the outbreak years for flea-borne typhus on record back to 1933. And as you can see in 2007, there's a marked increase of flea-borne typhus, and it has continued to rise with a high watermark this year, 2012, of 27 human cases.
Is that partly just better reporting, I mean, at least from the '30s perhaps?
That's correct, yeah. Some of it is a reporting anomaly, but some of the increases have yet to be explained. There are, there's some speculation that in the areas where we see concentrations of flea-borne typhus, it may be due to vegetation density has finally built out to support large quantities of urban backyard wildlife, like opossums and raccoons, that is putting it at greater risk. And for further information, we have a brand-new website up, all of the information about vectors and the different programs that we have, our environmental program, which has a lot of that, is very specific to the Newport Back Bay, are on our website. You can submit a service request for having mosquito fish delivered, reporting mosquito sources, and a host of other things that we provide at the district. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention one more time, we don't just do mosquitoes and flea-borne typhus, we also have a very active rodent control program, rodent education program, as well as the Red and Porter Fire Ant Program, and we provide a lot of information and education about flies and tick-borne disease, which is quite important in Orange County as well. And with that, I'll take any questions from the council.
Are there any questions?
I had one question for you, because we'll get this quite a bit. Some people say that the back bay is a breeding ground for mosquitoes, and I've always thought that the brackish water, they can't do well in that, but you're saying they can, and especially if it's runoff-fed and primarily freshwater.
That's a very good question, and I'll bring up kind of an interesting point. We have two species of mosquitoes that breed in the back bay that don't occur in many other places in Orange County. You actually have a brackish water breeding mosquito, a salt marsh mosquito, that breeds there, and you have also the malaria mosquito that breeds there that's not found in many other places.
What, the malaria?
Yeah, there's a, there's a specific type of mosquito that transmits malaria. So, if we did have malaria in California, it would have the capacity to transmit it to humans.
Oh.
Fortunately, we do not have any active malaria in the county.
Wow.
So, either types of those mosquitoes would be as aggressive with biting humans as your typical freshwater mosquito?
Yeah, the saltwater marsh mosquito, that one I mentioned, that one is actually a very aggressive daytime biter, which is unique in most of our mosquito species in Orange County, which prefer to feed in dusk and dawn in the evening hours. So, you kind of know when you've run into those mosquitoes, because they, they'll find you, you don't need to find them.
All right. Councilwoman Daigle?
No, I know the scorpion was the October vector of the month.
Yes.
Should we fear the scorpion?
We should not fear the scorpion, we should respect it and become educated about its important role in the ecosystem. Yep, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right. Notice to the public?
The City provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in silent mode. Now is the time for City Council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report, and I also want to note that all members of council are present.
Councilman Hill?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Protam Curry?
Nothing, thank you. Well, actually, just a couple of quick things. I was privileged to welcome the Self-Health County Conference to Newport Beach yesterday, and these are people from the transportation counties from throughout California, and they're here to talk about delivering transportation projects. Also, I had a chance to visit at Crystal Cove with Laura Drabek and see what great work is going on there as they expand the cottages that are available to the public, and also participated with the Navy League luncheon, or breakfast, last week, and heard an excellent presentation about the impacts of the potential fiscal cliff on the Navy, which are actually quite profound.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daigle?
Well, we held the Memorial Bike Ride. We had about 1,200 cyclists or riders, and we had a few hundred onlookers and walkers. It really brought the community together of all ages, and I know it was a difficult day for the families of Catherine and Sarah, who had died in bicycle accidents. We also had about 60 walkers from Newport Physicians Group, and that was where Dr. Campion led that medical group. The event took place at the top floor of the Whole Foods, and I highly recommend it, of the Whole Foods parking structure, and I highly recommend it as a gathering place. It really worked out well. We had a lot of staff support, so the event went off like clockwork, and I think it was just a great sense of energy. And I've been around cycling for a long time, and have always appreciated the camaraderie that it brings. Then I also took a tour of the new civic center. Everybody's going to have their own opinion about the architecture. What I found to be exceptional about it is the site plan or the layout. I think the parks are going to be amazing, there's a lot of public spaces, and in this case, as you may remember from the design competition, the winning architect did something different than the others, he didn't put the parking underground, he put it buffering MacArthur. And I think that's a real enhancement to the way that that site looks. So, in a few more months, it'll be open to the public, and you can all go and enjoy the spaces, so thank you.
Councilman Hen?
Just one quick thing, there was a Titleance Management Committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday, November the 21st, the day before Thanksgiving, and I think we're going to change the date of that, it's looking more like November the 28th, but we'll get a notice out to everyone when we do that. Thanks.
Councilman Selich?
I have nothing to say.
Well, I just want to remind everyone that this Saturday is the Walk in Santa Ana Heights, we're meeting at the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station at 9:00 a.m. We're going to walk around, see certain sites, including, we're going to pop into the Newport Beach Winery, we're not going to be drinking, it's only 9:00 in the morning, but that will be fun to see. And then I had the fun this morning of being a guest at the Sunrise Rotary Club, and was very impressed with their programs. They are raising money for victims of Sandy, but they also have several other programs, such as a mogul dental clinic that they are working with high school students to put together, and that may expand into also an eye clinic as well. So, very nice to hear that. I also had a third announcement, but I couldn't read my writing, so I apologize to whoever I said I would announce it, that I just couldn't figure out what my handwriting said, so...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, since Councilwoman Daigle brought up the Memorial Bike Ride, I was going to save this to our next announcement session, but there is some exciting news with respect to that. You'll know that the purpose of the bike ride was to begin to raise funds, the City has guaranteed to match on a three-to-one basis for additional bicycle safety in the city. And thus far, they have raised $60,000 towards that goal that the City will be matching on a three-to-one basis. Their goal is to reach $150,000, which would then max out the city's three-to-one match. And with that, they have now struck a deal with Amazon.com, where Amazon.com is willing to provide, and I believe it's 6% or 7% of the sales proceeds of people that buy on Amazon.com, if they enter through the portal of NewportBeachMemorialRide.com. So, if you go on www.N NewportBeachMemorialRide.com, you'll see in the upper-left-hand corner of that homepage, an Amazon.com and participating merchants link. If you click on that, that will take you to access Amazon.com, where you can do your normal shopping, and with that process, 6% or 7% of your sales will be credited to the Memorial Bike Ride account, which the City will then be matching three-to-one. So, they have not stopped, they're aggressively moving forward to maximize the opportunity of increasing bicycle safety in the city, and I would encourage everyone that shops on Amazon.com to enter it through their portal. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent calendar?
All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 13, and supplemental item number 17 are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion, unless members of the City Council's staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilwoman Daigle?
I have none.
Councilman Hen?
Nothing to pull, I just want to make a comment on item number five, which is the termination of the city manager's housing agreement, housing assistance agreement. Just want to make sure the public understands that the city manager, on his own volition, really without even asking, decided to make good on repayment in full of the city's loan to the extent of a $13,000 decrement that he would not otherwise have to have done under the terms of the agreement. And I didn't want that to be passed over without being noted for the benefit of the public. I, for one, would have been happy to abide by the original terms of the deal, but I think the city manager is to be commended for his decision in this regard.
Councilman Selich?
I have no items to pull.
Councilman Hill?
I have nothing.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing to pull, but I think both Councilman Hill and I have to recuse ourselves on item number six, as we own property within 500 feet of the project.
Mayor Protam Curry?
That is true.
I will pull number nine and number 12. As staff, do you have anything to remove? Is there anyone from the public that has something they would like removed from the consent calendar?
Dan Purcell, item eight.
Anyone else? All right, do we have a motion?
Aaron, do we need to leave, recuse ourselves?
No, just note that you recuse yourselves from those two items.
I would move the adoption of the consent calendar with the exceptions of items eight, nine, and 12, and noting the recusals of Councilmembers Rosansky and Hill on item six.
Second.
Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I have to read the resolution titles for items three, four, and 13. For three, resolution number 2012-94, resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, supporting an application by the City of Costa Mesa for the Orange County Transportation Authority's Measure M2 Traffic Signal Synchronization Program funding for the Newport Boulevard Corridor Synchronization Project. Item four, resolution number 2012-95, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, authorizing the city manager and the fire chief to act as the city's authorized agents to sign and execute documents for the purpose of participating in the Emergency Management Performance Grant Program. And item 13, resolution number 2012-102, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach establishing life safety specialist job classification salary ranges. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Purcell, number eight.
Dan Purcell, Corona Del Mar. This is about sidewalks. I don't have a presentation, but this is an absolutely beautiful home on Balboa Island. They've done a great job with their home and everything, but they're asking for a public sidewalk to keep their planter out there, and this is another case where they're gaining an extra foot or so, they're a number of feet into the setback, but if everyone goes around and does this, they take a foot of the sidewalk there, a foot and a half there, two feet there, we run out of sidewalks, and we all need to work together to make our sidewalks more available and accessible to people, for senior citizens, people who are challenged physically and what have you. We talk about parking, and parking garages, and traffic, and traffic jams. The more we can encourage people to walk and make it safer and more convenient for them to walk, the better health everyone will have. It's just, there are a whole lot of reasons why we need to do that. So, I'm not encouraging you not to approve this tonight, but I'm encouraging you going forward to really take a serious look at people who want to take the sidewalks for their, you know, planters or whatever. One extra foot wouldn't have changed the quality of this planter, they could have an absolutely beautiful planter without taking the public sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment on this item? All right, is I have a motion?
Move the action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, item number nine, I think staff had some comments on that.
Thank you Mayor Gardner and council members. So, for the public's education, this item is an implementation of an agreement dating back to 1980s involving the replacement of Newport, of basically the big palm trees around the entrance to Newport Center. And what I'd like to recommend to the council is something similar to the recommended action, but with some discussion by you about this, and that is to agree to complete the payment of this to the Irvine Company per our agreement with them, but also have a discussion about where the agreement goes from here, because discussing this with the city attorney, the city attorney believes that this agreement probably isn't in the kind of form or enforceability that it could be or should be, especially as old as it is and how it extends indefinitely. So, I'd kind of like the council's feedback on that. Again, my recommendation would be that we indeed make good on what we owe, and improve that agreement going forward. As I am told, it is actually city-owned right-of-way where that land is, and again, for the public, this is the grassy area in the big Canary Island palms in front of Newport Center. So, I'd welcome the council's input on that, but that would be my recommendation.
All right, is there any comments?
Well, all I know, I just, when I saw it, I think I struck probably the same way everybody else was, is like, why are we paying for this? But if it is our property and we have an agreement, I would say yes, to go ahead. But I would be interested in exploring that if it is our property, whether we can come to some additional agreements, because we, these are very expensive trees to replace, and is there some plan that we could do where we would start to alternate, perhaps as a tree dies, and put in things that are not quite so expensive, even though I know Mr. Brand loves palm trees, but maybe he... Brand loves palm trees, that maybe he could love a different kind of palm tree that's not so expensive or something? So I think that'd be something worth exploring. All right. Ed, do you have anything?
Yeah, so we, the grass area is in the right-of-way as well as the trees. I didn't realize the grass area was in the public right-of-way.
Mr. Miller, do you want to add something?
Mayor, councilmembers, Dan Mel with Irvine Company. This agreement covers not only that area, the entryway into the Newport Center, but it covers the Newport Center, the whole road, all the connector roads. So it's a very comprehensive agreement. And the city and the Irvine Company worked out an agreement where we would do some things in the public right-of-way, and you would do some things in the public right-of-way. And it was so, whether it's private or public, we all agreed to treat it as one system. So in the agreement, the city does some things, we do some things. And the reason the agreement was put together was that we wanted to enhance the maintenance level and also to enhance the type of trees and landscaping that's in both the public and our ownership. So the idea was, we came to the city in 1985, and we said, listen, we're willing to contribute and share some of the maintenance in the public right-of-way, but let's all agree to have one comprehensive landscaping plan. So I have no problem taking letter agreement and putting it into a regular type of agreement. I agree, 1985, it's almost 30 years old, it's worked very fine, and we've shared these costs. But going forward, I think we can look at it and look at, maybe, I talked to Dave, maybe those areas that have kind of unpredictable costs, because palm trees don't die every year, they die on occasion. And maybe those are the kind of things we could focus on, and then you can focus on predictable kinds of expenses that you can always budget, know what those are. So going forward, I think that I agree with the city manager's recommendation, but the whole idea was to enhance the level of maintenance and landscaping there, and we would share these costs.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Curry?
I would move the action with the city manager's recommendation.
All right, is there public comment on this item?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I, like the city attorney, was unable to find any evidence that this agreement had ever been reviewed publicly or approved by the city council, which I'm sure the Irvine Company knows means that the agreement, under the terms of our city charter, is not binding on the city. It's my view that your obligation to spend the money, according to the people's rules for spending the money, probably should outweigh your obligation to make good on a promise made by a staff member outside of those rules. However, if you do honor the contract, it seemed clear to me we should be asking if this was actually done per the terms of the letter agreement. Specifically, it has a number of conditions. I'm looking at the second page of it here, the first paragraph. The Irvine Company was supposed to come to the city and get our prior consent before removing these trees, and it was supposed to let the city do the work at the city's cost. I don't know if either of those things happened. If they did not, then they particularly did not follow the agreement, and I don't think we have an obligation to pay for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, city manager, do you feel you have sufficient?
Yeah, just to be clear on what I would recommend the motion be, if Mr. Curry agrees, is that is to indeed transmit the funds to the Irvine Company for the invoices provided to us, and then direct staff, specifically the Public Works Department and the City Attorney's Office, to negotiate a different type of arrangement. And I guess I'll be that vague and that specific so that we could be able to bring that back to you, for final approval going forward.
I agree.
Who's second is this?
I did.
That's fine, all right. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, and then I also pulled item number 12, which is the Corona Del Mar Lane Merge Relocation Trial. Several members of the bid cannot be here tonight, and they requested that we continue this, so I would like to make a motion that we move this until the first meeting in January.
Second.
Is there any public comment?
I expected to have, you know, a more formal thing on this, but this is a Corona Del Mar relocation trial. I think the trial showed that we certainly are getting a lot more pileup of traffic there. We've seen traffic go beyond, on Coast Highway beyond Avocado Back. We've seen it go the other way, all the way to Margarit, because we've changed the traffic light at the market, so it hurts things too. The normal design of traffic in an intersection is you add lanes so that you can get more cars through when the lights turn green. We were restricting traffic by taking away lanes. This doesn't make any sense at all. We're having a problem with bike lanes with only two lanes going through the intersection. If the new design goes in on the one side, you have a terrible time. And I think it's unsafe to have the bicycles on Coast Highway anyway. This idea of sharing the highway and equal rights for bicycles, that was fought up in San Francisco, under my understanding.
Actually, Sacramento was in the vehicle code.
Excuse me?
Sacramento, it's in the vehicle code.
It may be in the vehicle code, but in San Francisco, they use that out on the park properties, and they killed people. And it got so that the bikers were then trying to take over the highway just to slow it down. And so they removed the bikers, is what I remember on the, it's been a long time ago. The other thing is, is that I understand that the city's removing of lanes and restricting traffic there has been opposed by the county and asked that a full hearing be made at that point. And I think that would certainly be appropriate, too. So I, there are many reasons here that we should either leave it alone, or, as you pointed out, maybe remove the parking on the coastal side of the highway. And if that is removed, I think that would be a beautiful place to put the bike lane. Maybe you could share the 11-foot lane between the bicycles for three or four feet and the restaurants, which do not deserve this in any sense. They haven't, I mean, there's not any particular need of theirs that's greater than any other restaurant along Coast Highway. So my comment is, is I believe this is something that should be dropped, and it can be dropped, just drop it and go back to its original, or it can be dropped, as you pointed out, and use the parking lane also for either traffic, I mean, not for traffic, but for beautification of the other side. And that would be a traffic improvement. I do think that bike lanes on Coast Highway are very hazardous. You've got a speed limit in there that's 45 miles an hour, and a bicycle can do about 20. And so you've got a two-to-one, the big thing you talk about when you put cars on freeways is can they go freeway speed? If they can't go freeway speed, they're not supposed to be on freeways. So you would think that this would be done, this is a state highway, and so I believe it should be handled similarly. I appreciate your ability letting me talk.
Yes, thank you. Just, Dick, for information, that the, where the sharrows are, it is a 35 mile per zone. We don't have any sharrows in the 45.
Well, 35 is still well above what the bicycle can get to.
All right, but just to clarify, just to clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not 45. All right, do I have a motion to continue to the first meeting in January?
Yes, we made the motion.
It was already made, all right, thank you. Can we please vote? Is there any other public comment on this? All right, can we vote, please?
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Public comments?
Public comments.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right, is there any public comment?
Mayor Gardner and city council, my name is Homer Bluedow, and I'm here both as a member of the Commodores Club, a group that puts on many special events in Newport Beach, including the Boat Parade, and also a member of the Executive Committee of Visit Newport, Inc. And I'm here to give you a personal invitation to our sixth annual mayor and council reception, which is going to be held on Tuesday, December the 11th, at the Bank Bay Bistro, as it has been for six years, after your reorganization meeting. The public is cordially invited, and the cost to everyone attending but the mayor and the city council is $25, and that will include some wonderful hors d'oeuvres and an open bar. It gives Commodores and Visit Newport Beach and members of the public a wonderful opportunity to thank you for all of the hard work that you do and have done over the last year in keeping our city clean and beautiful and well-run, well-maintained, financially solvent, and safe. We know that you will be opening the new council chambers that evening, and that's another reason to salute you and to celebrate you. The event will begin at 6:00. We know that you won't get there until probably sometime around 7:00, but we invite members of the public to come out and join us. It's a wonderful event, and a good time will be had by all. Thank you very much, and thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. Are there other public comments?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I wanted to start by saying I share your, what I assume is your relief, that the frightful specter of automated red light traffic cameras coming to Newport Beach has finally been lifted from our heads by the passage of Measure EE. At the same time, I wanted to remind you that while you may be relieved of that anxiety, Measure EE did impose upon you some new obligations which you may not be aware of. In particular, the electorate chose to accept your staff's recommendation to delete the bulk of the current charter sections 114 and 115, which were the people's rules for handling and registering what are called "demands" against the city. The word "demands" has an oddly sinister and litigious tone to it, but it is actually the word that is used in city charters to refer to the routine bills and invoices that are presented to a city for payment, including the staff's requests for their paychecks. Our charter rules for processing demands, including registering them on a first-come, first-served basis in the event of a temporary shortfall in an account, were pretty standard and very similar to those found in the charters of at least 20 other California cities, including Anaheim, Irvine, and Seal Beach. As best I can tell, the rewritten Charter Section 1114, in that our electorate expects the staff to follow state law for processing demands only to the extent that the state law requires that of a charter city, and otherwise it expects you, the council, to reinvent those rules by means of an ordinance. In 2010, when you chose to delete some rules related to the civil service system you had in place and ordinance to replace those, I am unaware in this case of any ordinance planned to replace these rules for processing demands. With only about a month left before Measure EE changes become effective, I would recommend you instruct the staff to work on this. Otherwise, Newport Beach will soon find itself with no clear legal framework for paying the bills presented to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? All right, seeing none. Oral reports from council on committee activities. Councilwoman Daigle?
None.
Councilman Hen?
I have none.
Councilman Selich?
I have none.
Councilman Hill?
I have none.
Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
Any reports?
And I have none. So, now to current business. Commercial tidlands.
Thank you, Mayor Gardner and council members. Here we are again. This is a proposal tonight to address what I'd call other commercial harbor uses. Think of those as uses beyond and smaller than the large commercial marinas that you folks considered at the last meeting. At the same time, there is a different proposal for the large commercial marinas, and I'm going to talk about that. So, as usual, I'm going to go through, hopefully, a fairly quick PowerPoint and describe a little bit of the process and certainly the recommendations right up front by the ad hoc committee. And again, that committee is Mr. Hen, Mr. Rosansky, and Mr. Selich. And they did hold one workshop about this. It was a little, a couple weeks ago, I guess, on Halloween. We had good attendance from the harbor stakeholders, and I think you'll see those shape some of their recommendations. So I'm going to go right to the proposed recommendations, and these are summarized in the staff report. There's a recommendation for shipyards that stays at 50 cents a square foot. Recommendation for fuel docks, that is 50 cents a square foot with a minimum rent that's offset by, meaning if they sell more than enough gallons of gas to exceed the 50 cents a square foot, the dollar, sorry, the penny five, penny and a half, or two cents a gallon would override that. And that is a penny and a half cents a gallon to 100,000 gallons a year, then two cents a gallon above 100,000 gallons a year, and that would be gas or diesel. There's a recommendation for yacht clubs. It would be $1.2 a square foot for non-rented slips if the slips are, and I'm sorry, and the recommendation as changed by the committee was to bring that down to 50 cents a square foot for non-rented slips, guest access or educational uses. If they rented something out in a commercial or a market way, it would fall under the small or large commercial marina index rate. There's a category of daily rental boats. Think of those, the stand-up paddlers or Duffy's, things like that. There'd be no change following the workshop. The proposal is $1.2 a square foot. For HOAs, if they have rented slips to their members, that would stay at $1.2. If they rented to the public, that would go to a marina index, large or small. Guest slips for restaurants, also $1.2 a square foot. Sport fishing charters, also $1.2 a square foot. Large charter boats, this was a change, that it go from the large commercial marina index rate to $1.2 a square foot. And then another change in the small commercial marina category, it was originally defined as less than 3,000 square feet of total waterways. The proposal by the committee is to take that to 15,000 square feet of total waterways, and that there'd be a rate that is 75% of a large commercial marina index, which, since that has gone down, as proposed, this would go down as well, and that would go to about $1.26 a square foot of tidlands used. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the large commercial marina rate, the proposal is not to charge 18.5%, but to go to what is an equivalent to 16% of gross, or its equivalent index rate, which we calculate as about $1.68 a square foot. There's also a change to the phase in, and I'll talk about that in a moment, but this is a summary of the recommendations of the committee. I'm going to show you briefly what the appraisal said and how it's kind of been.
You may want to note the harbor-wide reappraisal change.
Thank you. Excellent point. I've summarized what are kind of use-specific changes, and then there's a general change, as my pointer dies, of any use in the harbor, any commercial use in the harbor would be subject to a harbor-wide appraisal at 2018, right after the rates are paid in 2018, so that's, they're due on March 1st. So this would be harbor-wide and independent appraisal process. This was actually recommended by the stakeholder group. They basically have two appraisers. If they're within the ballpark of each other, you split the difference. If they're not within the ballpark of each other, you pick another appraiser.
Just to clarify, Dave.
You got it. Because. Let's be very specific about it, Councilman Rosansky, please. If I goof that up, let me know.
After the bills are sent out in 2018, March 1st, within that period between March 1st, 2018 and 2019, the harbor-wide appraisal will be con- 1st, 2018 and 2019, the harbor-wide appraisal will be conducted. And based on the appraisal in 2019, the rates will change to whatever.
Whatever the appraisal recommended, correct.
Because people, you said they pay their bill on that date, but a lot of these people are going to be paying their bill monthly, and.
Good point. So, those would apply.
So, that rate would be in effect that whole year, and then on 2019, the new rate would come into effect based on the appraisal.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Hopefully, that's clear. Here's what the appraisal said. Remember, we did two appraisals, one by Gary Rasmussen, one by Jim Netzer, and basically you'll see in a lot of cases, the committee is recommending splitting the difference at $1.2, from $1.5 to 99 cents. I'm going to give you some examples. These are examples that we gave at the workshop changed to the workshop, post-workshop recommendations. This would be, for instance, Larson's, so's the current rent and the proposed rent after the end of the phase-in period, so after 2013, 2018, excuse me. And you can see how we're talking about some marina uses that have two uses that will be charged different rates. So, this one has a shipyard rate at 50 cents for some of its square footage, and a standard small marina rate at $1.26 for some of the use. Another example, Explore Ocean, with an important asterisk, that this may be lower if more of their current space is dedicated towards educational uses later on. So, you could see they have a day-use boat rental component, and they have, we would have the standard marina rates likely lowered to the $1.26. And that's where we come up with that rent. Newport Landing would be the next one. You see the current rent and the proposed rent at 2018 again. You have a combination of day-use boat rental at $1.2, sport fishing charter $1.2, fuel dock at 50 cents, although that would go to a per-gallon charge, too, so that number could change.
Yeah, the 50 cents is just the base.
The base.
Yeah.
Newport Harbor Yacht Club, this is a significant one. Obviously, you can see what the current rent and the proposed rent is at 2018, and that's because they do have a significant component that is charged out at standard marina rates. And you can see, a little bit blurry, and hopefully it's better in your presentation what the math is on that. But again, a couple of different uses. Some of it is private waterways. We, of course, don't charge over private waterways. That's not ours, not ours to charge rent for. One more, VMA Mariners Mile. You can see there's a charter vessel rate for some of the area. There's a shipyard rate for some of the area, that's this little area here, and there's an area that's private, so that's where that number comes up. I'm going to talk a little bit about gas docks, because I know we've gotten a number of emails about the gas docks proposal and show you where, what the appraisals said and what the rents are. So, what the appraisal said, Mr. Netzer proposed 99 cents a square foot base rent against this penny and a half to two cents a gallon. And then Rasmussen did not propose a per-gallon pricing. He proposed $1.5 a square foot. The committee's proposal is a 50 cent a square foot base rent against the per-gallon charge. And when Netzer did this survey, and this is in the appraisal, this was July, August of '12, he was showing what other percent rent is paid by areas around us. And you could see the D and the G, that means diesel and gas. You could see sometimes it's 3%, 6%, 4 cents a gallon. Here, it's a penny and a half. Here, it's two cents. You could see kind of the range. Here, it's 4 cents a gallon. Here, it's 4 cents a gallon. We also did a survey of what gas prices are about right now, and this was.
You know, Dave, can you move back to that?
Sure, Councilman.
Just so everybody's clear, because there's two different ways of pricing there. One's a percent cents per gallon, and one's a percentage rent. Now, you know, everybody knows, well, you can see what, well, actually, you don't have it up there, you'll have it on a later slide, but what gas prices are, they're in the four to $5 a gallon range for a lot of these places. So, if you're talking about, like, for instance, Oceanside Harbor Fuel, 3% of, just take four bucks, for instance, that's 12 cents a gallon, and we're proposing 1.5 to 2 cents a gallon, just to put it in perspective. There's, the next one was 6%, wasn't it?
Right.
So, you're talking about 24 cents a gallon as opposed to 1.5 to 2 cents a gallon. Now, granted, because these are not apples-to-apples, all those other users have uplands and tidelands as part of their lease. We're just renting tidelands. But when you're talking about, you know, that type of differential, it's clear that, you know, we're not out of the ballpark by any means.
This is an example of the gas dock pricing. We got this a number of ways, through phone and also by website, and you could see kind of where some of the pricing is. There's a range on a couple of these, and there's actually ranges embedded in others, but, and that range involves, is a result of volume discounting. You can pay less if you're buying more for a number of these fuel docks. But you can see, these three are Newport Harbor, Island Marine, Hills, and Petro Sea. And then the ones around it, I kind of went, except for San Pedro, I kind of went south to north, and you could see kind of what the rate, at least on diesel, is. And again, generally, this pricing reflected today's date with a couple of exceptions if we couldn't get today's data. So, in summary, the recommendation from the committee is that the large commercial marina rent would go from 18 to 16, 18.5 to 16, be flat in 2013, and then phase-in to 2018. I'll show you a chart on that. New harbor-wide appraisal in March 2018 for 2019's rental rates and beyond. And then if you approve this action today, it would actually change what you approved at the last meeting. And then the other rental rents are as proposed today with phase-ins as proposed. Let me quickly show you what that table looks like with the phase-ins. This is what was approved last time. You'd see two years flat, and then up to what is in effect, the $1.97, which was 18.5, by, you basically get to it there by 2021. And the proposal by the committee today is a lower rate. You get to it a little bit faster with the guarantee of the harbor-wide appraisal after that point. So, that's how that phase-in would work. So, with that, I'd welcome any questions or comments.
Anything from, questions for staff? I will open it for public comment. Is there any desire from the council in terms of length of public comment? Then we'll. Would everyone like to have just three minutes? Yes, no?
Yeah.
All right, you have three minutes. No, I invite public comments on this.
Good evening. I'm Seymour Beak. I'm a partner in Island Marine Fuel, which is a fuel dock on Balboa Island. I don't know what it is about fuel docks, but I look at the multiple of the existing rent to the proposed rent on these other harbor uses, and I didn't see anything over three times what people are paying today. If we go to this gallonage, this two cents a gallon thing, on our fuel dock, we'd be paying more than seven times what we're paying today in tidelands fee. And yeah, we can absorb that, we pass it along to the customer, but I guess I'm really here to kind of defend the boating public in Newport Harbor. Pay a lot of tax already on fuel. Sales tax is going up. I know technically this isn't a tax, but it's going to feel like a tax, because they're going to be paying two cents more a gallon. And I think that the Rasmussen proposal of $1.5 per square foot is a lot more in line with what we would have expected and what I think is fair, that's more than three times what we're paying now. The other thing I guess I don't understand is why anybody would want to go to a gallonage system and have to worry about auditing the number of gallons sold and that kind of thing. If you want to just up the rent to that point, you could do that, but it seems to me it's trouble for everybody to worry about a gallonage. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. If you think you're going to speak, you might want to move forward, so we keep this moving along.
Gary Hill, I own a marine fuel dock here in Newport. I did, oh, Seymour, I agree. I think the Rasmussen thing is something we can afford. That would be three times. You're, why do you guys, as I mentioned, I don't know how many months ago, why do I need to be in bed of the city of Newport Beach? It's my own tanks, it's my own reels, it's my own dock, it's my own pier. I've done all this myself. I've built this, I've paid for it. You know, I pay you guys enough. Please, let's just go square footage, and you guys won't have to audit me, I don't have to show you my books, and it's going to be three times what I'm paying now, not seven or eight times what you're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. We're all through? Going once, going twice? If you are going to speak, please be prepared to come down as soon as the previous speaker is through.
And I apologize, I thought there was going to be many more speakers.
You got proud on your clothes.
Christine Thaggard, on behalf of the Newport Beach Private Dock Owners Association. And while I understand that tonight, we're here on the commercial arenas, I think that part of the problem is the way this has been piecemealed. I know you've heard about SEQA. I looked at the SEQA declaration that was filed and recorded. It was only for the commercial marinas. The problem is that SEQA requires that this entire project be looked at as a whole, and I think that the city is doing itself a disservice by not bringing everyone in and looking at the totality of the project and the potential effect on the environment. You've heard a lot from the commercial owners about the effect that they're going to have on their business, but there are other effects that are going to be a result from this as well. I would also urge the council to send notices and letters out to the residential owners. Many of them don't know what's going on. They're frankly going to be shocked when they find out they don't own their docks. Through the years, I've had many conversations with the Orange County Tax Assessor's Office and taken the position that the docks are personal property and that the property taxes shouldn't be paid on them. The assessor's office consistently has said, when you buy a home with a dock, you have to report the entire value. And what that means is that these homeowners have been paying property taxes, real property taxes, on their docks for many, many years. There are also issues that haven't been addressed, and particularly with respect to the residential owners, the commercial owners have very fine counsel that can advise them on this, is that what you're going to do is, if you do a lease, is create a tax on possessory interest, the leasehold interest. I don't know if you're aware, but at Beacon Bay, when you buy the home and lease the land, that there is an additional tax on the possessory interest, and at times this results in the property taxes being far in excess of the 1%. I would urge you to hold multiple workshops, and not on Thanksgiving, not on Halloween, and preferably not during the holiday periods. I think that we need to slow down and look at this, and really look at this. I would also urge you to explain, and I've talked to several people, and nobody's been able to explain to me, how you're calculating the rates. You know, you talk about a 3,000-square-foot marina, a 5,000-square-foot marina. Are you measuring the surface area that the docks cover? Are you measuring the area that includes the pier going out? I think that there's a lot of confusion on that, and I think that it's just important that we all sit down and understand the totality of this, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gary Pickett. I'm with Ardell Marina. When I saw the new proposal, after what I thought was the final proposal from the resolution passed last month, I was asked whether we would be a supporter of this proposal, and I calculated what the cost would be to Ardell Marina with this new proposal as compared to the one that was passed by resolution. And it's costing Ardell Marina $60,000 over the phase-in period of additional rent. It's difficult for me to be enthusiastic about such a proposal, particularly when you condense the phase-in period, you increase the annual fee, and you do give us the promise of an appraisal in five years, but we've experienced what you've done with appraisals in this past episode that we've been through. So, having an appraisal dangling in front of us five years from now is not very alluring. I have also noticed that the city has provided significant concessions to businesses that are integral to the marina business or to the marine industry, such as shipyards, yacht clubs, daily rental boats, homeowners associations, guest slips for restaurants. I would also ask that the city council consider another industry that is integral to the marine industry, and that is yacht brokerages. In Mr. Netzer's appraisal, he indicated that yacht brokerages should be paying 4% of gross revenue, and right now, that number looks really good to me. Lastly, it's disappointing to me that over the course of this February 23rd to November 13th time period, that the city has never gone to any one of the harbor businesses such as Duffield Electric Boats or Hills Boat Service and said, hey, would you be willing to take a look, or let us see your financial statements, to see the implications of our increases on your financial statements? I'm in an unusual situation in that I was the CPA for 21 years for both Duffield Marine and Hills Boat Service. Neither one of them has authorized me to say anything about it tonight, but I will tell you that the increases that you are putting onto these businesses are going to be very severe to those bottom lines, very severe. Thank you very much.
I'm not quite clear. Do you prefer the resolution from the previous meeting to this proposed?
I prefer the $1.60 something phased in over eight years.
Which is, which one is, huh? Neither one. All right, so you don't care if we do anything tonight? You just assume.
Well, it's disappointing, it's disappointing that, you know, it's going to cost us $60,000.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But if you had to have A from two weeks ago or B from tonight, do you have a preference?
I think I would have the former resolution that was passed.
Okay. Thank you.
Before you go, Gary, because you and I, we, along with the rest of the committee, sat in meetings together, and weren't you folks the ones who said you'd rather have the appraisal sooner rather than later? I mean, we had it out 20 years, then we had it to 15 years, and you still weren't happy with that. We moved to 10 years. Now, we moved to five years because we felt that that's what you guys wanted. Now, you're telling me that you don't want a five-year appraisal?
Councilman, that was not my express opinion. That was the opinion of other people in that room at that day.
Oh, so you, so you sat there, and you had an opposite opinion, and you didn't tell us that?
Well, I didn't have an opposite, you know, whether it's five years, 10 years, you know, I think originally there was a 20-year appraisal, correct?
Originally, yes.
Yeah. That just seemed way too far out there.
Okay. And in our negotiations that we sat across the table, I think it was your attorney, Mr. McKittrick, who pressed on more than one occasion about the appraisal process, especially the appraisal processes that was outlined in the lease that we had approved. We basically took your appraisal process, and now you're telling me that you have no faith in that appraisal process that we're going to do in five years?
Well, I'm hoping that the appraisal process is done in a manner unlike it was done.
Well, the manner is set out in the lease and the exact form that your attorney asked for.
Okay.
So, are you telling me that you don't support what your attorney asked for?
Well, I'm hoping that it's done in an up-and-up manner in which we have some qualified appraisals.
You don't think that your attorney asked for a process that can be done in an up-and-up manner?
No, I think so, you know, and I'm hoping it's followed.
Well, it'll be in a lease, so I guess it'll have to be followed.
Okay. Then that sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
Good evening, Mayor Gardner and members of the city council. My name is.
My name is Judy Gorsky, and I'm Commodore of the Bellboy Yacht Club. I want to thank you for the modification that you made in the proposed tidlin fees for non-rented slips used by yacht clubs, reducing the rates to 50 cents a square foot. While Bellboy Yacht Club, which is a not-for-profit organization, would prefer that you consider us in the same way that you consider nonprofit institutions that use slips in Newport Harbor, we are grateful for the reduction. I would still like to make a couple of points for the record. Bellboy Yacht Club has a community purpose, and we contribute to the health of Newport Harbor by supporting high school sailing programs which use our docks during the sailing year, or school year. We also teach sailing to more than 150 young people during our summer program each year. We run youth regattas that regularly bring young sailors to Newport, including our international youth match race championship, our Governor's Cup, which we've run for the last 46 years. Our main and race docks have no commercial purpose. These provide a resource that allow us to host an annual chalk hospital regatta that benefits another key member of Orange County. These docks allow us also to host regattas and cruises throughout the year that bring visiting boaters to Newport who contribute to the local economy. In addition, we remain concerned about the economic consequences of additional increases in our harbor. Last month, BYC's members voted for an assessment on themselves to fund a $250,000 shortfall that we're projecting in 2013 for the marina that we lease from the Irvine Company. And this is before any tidlin fees increases for commercial marinas are passed along. Competition from the city-owned marina and higher city mooring rates are factors that our members understand, and that's why they took action to keep our club fiscally healthy. I'm hopeful, though still uncertain, that this action will not have a negative impact on our membership or their ability to keep their boats in Newport Harbor. Your action to delay the phase-in of additional tidlin fees will allow us time to absorb the impact of the current economic challenges, although we would have preferred the two-year delay before the phase-in begins. In conclusion, our primary docks are used to educate and train the community's youth, raise money for charity, and contribute to the public economic welfare of the harbor. Thank you for helping us remain a contributing member of Newport Harbor.
Judy, do you, as far as your youth programs, do you have to be a member to participate? Thank you.
I just have one question. Do you realize that virtually all of your public youth dock areas, not under our jurisdiction, that it's a separate lease with the county of Orange?
That's still unclear to us.
Well, you gotta look it up.
Next, please. Is there other public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Comments from council members?
I don't know, maybe if we could address some of the questions that came up, if, Aaron, if you had any down. I just wanted to note, actually Ms. Thagardt's comments. We've never said that the folks who have a residential pier don't own their docks. And they do own their docks. What they don't own is the waterways and the land underneath the waterways beneath them. So I want to make sure that was clear for the record. And also to note that, I don't know that the council has proposed anything, a lease versus a permit for the residential pier holders. Right now, they're on a permit. We're certainly aware of the possessory interest tax issue. In fact, that's why this council at the last meeting gave an option of doing the lease versus the permit. So I just want to make sure that was clear to the record.
There were one particular comment that I think perhaps the committee could address, which was the process of deciding to go for the cent and a half per gallon as opposed to simply a flat square foot, and why that's considered better. So if we could explain that.
Well, I think it was pretty clear from the exhibit that he has up there. I mean, that's the way it's done in many harbors, where they're at a much higher percentage of gross rent. I don't really, are any of them flat rents? I don't think so. So, you know, we were just kind of mimicking what seems to be going on in most of the other harbors.
Councilman Sonich?
Yeah, our approach on the gallonage is actually much more favorable than going on the percentages that are up there that some of the other harbors charge. And there is a template from the Huntington Harbor Field Dock that was just approved last year, where they're charging exactly the same rates, and they're getting, on top of that, they're charging a 10% on all the sundry sales that take place, ice, soft drinks, beer, things of that nature, which is not in our proposal. So our proposal is actually probably the most favorable proposal out of any of the fuel docks that we've been able to find in Southern California.
All right.
Just a question. Ed, you're more familiar than I am with Huntington. Is that an analogous situation here to Newport in terms of tidlins and uplins and so forth?
It's very similar, because the fuel dock and the pier and all of those facilities are on tidlins, and the tanks themselves are on adjacent uplins, which is basically the situation we have in Newport.
Also, something that hasn't been mentioned is the agreement by the council as part of this, that at the end of the process, there will be a further review, that we will ask the committee that's worked on these to step back and look at everything as a whole, and see if there are adjustments further, and I don't mean upward adjustments, but adjustments that still should be made, and to bring that back to council for discussion and review. Is that not correct?
If you adopt all four recommended actions, that is recommend action number four, that the committee come, review this and come back prior to December 31st, 2013.
Yeah, just to be a little more clear, I perceive that as an exercise to make sure that the individual decisions that were made along the way in sort of a sequential way, looking back at the end of the process, that those individual decisions are internally consistent with each other. So it's a matter of comparative consistency, I guess, if you will, that there would not be an anomaly that would appear to be the case, looking back.
I think one other thing that's also been a little bit overlooked, we kind of discussed it a little bit in the study session today, is the, I believe, and, you know, I won't be here because my tenure in council is ending, but I believe that it's the intention of the council, that the excess or the extra funds that are going to be collected as a result of this will be plowed back into the harbor, and that although it hasn't been set up yet, that there'll be some type of a fund set up where most, if not all, of these monies will go into the fund to fund the harbor improvements that are, you know, on our five-year and 10- and 15-year plan. So, you know, it's not like the money's going to disappear into a black hole, and it's only going to go back, be plowed back into the harbor to make it a better harbor for not only our tenants, but also for the users of the harbor. So I think that's something that really hasn't been stressed a lot in all these negotiations, but is very important.
But at the same time, we also have the understanding, having looked at the figures, that even with these increases, there will still be funds, the general fund will still continue to pay for a great many improvements in the harbor, that our tidlin management fees will never begin to cover our expenses. Is that correct?
Well, beyond that, in the last two years, we've already spent several multiples of whatever these increased fees might generate. We've already spent several multiples with a list, that was a very long list that we saw this afternoon, of improvements to the harbor, all throughout the harbor.
All right.
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
I had one question. I don't support the first three recommendations. I could, of course, support the fourth, which is the tidlins looking further in it.
All right. Would you like to break that apart, then?
Not really.
Okay. All right. Then please vote.
Great. I would just like to make a quick comment here. I opposed this when it came up before us the last time. I do think the committee has tried to listen to some of the comments that were made by the people who testified. The revised formula that calls for an expedited five-year appraisal process is precisely what was asked for by the major marina owners. Reducing the percentage of the fees, and let's be clear here, by the way, there's a lot of disingenuous language that's being used, it tries to characterize these as taxes in order to be inflammatory by some of the journalists, but they're fees. To move that from 20% down to about 16% is, I think, commendable. I think that's the same number, by the way, that was recommended to me by the harbor users when we brought a compromise proposal in September. If we'd adopted it then, perhaps we wouldn't be here now. But the committee has made movement, and I think there should be commended for that. As it relates to the other businesses, I was troubled by the percent or the per gallon charge for fuel, but as we look at what the other harbors, what the other fuel suppliers and the other harbors are charging, it is consistent with what they are doing. And as was mentioned by the mayor, we are looking at a $29 million investment program in the harbor, and that's a very, very significant investment. And I think if there's one big problem in the entire process of what we have here, it is that for 20 years, the council did not address this issue. We allowed these fees to stay where they were, and that's the reason why the size and the magnitude of the fees is so overwhelming to the businesses and to the marinas who are in the harbor now, is because we're just catching up on 20 years, frankly, of irresponsibility in action by the city council and not keeping these at pace. So reluctantly, I'm going to support this, because it does represent, I think, improvement over what we did before. It reduces the cost from what we adopted before, and I think on the whole, that's a good thing.
All right. Please vote. I'm sorry, very sorry. Councilman Hill, I didn't see your light.
Not half as sorry as I am. As I said before, I have wrestled over this as probably more than any issue that's come before the council in my two-year tenure. I said before last time, and I still have that philosophy, that I am most concerned about the small guy, small gal, that continues to struggle through this economy, and I think the economy is going to be a struggle for a period of time. I'm the one that suggested the two-year level before the move up over the next eight years. But I too, very clearly, at the last meeting, heard representatives of the marinas acknowledge how satisfied they were that an appraisal method had been achieved and agreed to, and how they were dissatisfied that it was 10 years out, and still unhappy with the 18.5% as the wrong number. And so when I saw the staff report of having that appraisal method moved into a five-year window, and having the 18.5% moved to 16%, I felt that those were significant changes. The moving from two years of no increase to one year bothered me until I started to run the numbers, because my focus was on the small businesses, and the small businesses are at 75%. And when I look at the first-year increase that's planned, and I take 75% of that, I realize that, and I'm sorry to say, the first year of increase, which is the second year in the program, that's six cents. And so, you know, I just can't feel all that bad about that. And so I think that, at least in my mind, to have something that is closer to where everyone wanted to be, I don't know of anyone that would walk up and say, would you rather have no fee or a fee, that they would say, oh, please, charge me a fee. And this is something that I feel that, you know, once again, as I said before, when I raised my hand to take this position, I swore the oath that I would uphold the constitution of the state of California, and I do believe that we have a requirement to do something. I said before, I think it's the right thing to do, but the wrong time to do it. And I still think that the program offers some opportunity for planning and recovery, so I will be supporting this advice.
Mr. Hill's comments have raised one issue for me, and that is to make sure we all have an understanding of the phase-in period. For the smaller marinas, the staff report proposes a phase-in period where, when they catch up to the large marina amount, they are now phased in. I think what Mr. Hill is talking about would be--
That is not acceptable.
--would be they would phase in the same percentage increase as the large marinas. So if you were to take Mr. Hill's proposal, it would be to slightly adjust the phase-in for the small marinas, so that instead of small marinas are up at their rate at 2017, they're up at 2018 with everybody else. So I just want to make sure that was clear.
I would ask that that be part of the motion.
Well, I was going to say, I'll amend my motion to reflect that.
All right. The second is?
I accept.
All right. Any other comments from council members? Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the three resolutions associated with the item. Resolution number 2012-96, a resolution of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, amending resolution number 2012-91, and resolution number 2012-92, related to large commercial marinas located upon tidlins. Resolution number 2012-97, a resolution of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, approving a model lease template and model permit template for commercial uses located upon tidlins. And resolution number 2012-98, a resolution of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, setting rent for commercial uses located upon tidlins. With council member Dagel voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Thank you. Item 15, Fox Lawson Associates Executive Comp Management Classification and Compensation Study.
Can you see the presentation?
Yeah. Should be loaded.
Okay. All right. Okay. Just tell me when.
So Mayor Gardner and council members, actually, we'll wait a few minutes. I know a number of folks might want to, they don't have to clear out, but... So Mayor Gardner and council members, this next item is something we talked to you a little bit about in the study session once already, and this is a presentation by Fox Lawson, who was our consultant, on two major, on one major project, and that is to appropriately classify where our city employees are in light of their compensation, what cities we compare to when we do salary surveys. And in this case, and the purpose of tonight's meeting, is to set ranges for the executive level employee, and with the important caveat that we are out of compliance right now with PERS's rules, PERS being the California Public Employee Retirement System, that says every employee needs to be in a range. And with our executives, not everyone is in a range, because it's been so long since we've looked at this. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Terry Cassidy, our deputy city manager.
Thank you, Dave. Mayor Gardner and members of the council, this is an important part of setting our organization into the 21st century and beyond, in the sense that we have never undertaken a comprehensive classification nor compensation study. And in accordance with the council adopted philosophy, we wanted to have an outside consultant with expertise in both public sector and private sector orientation to do this study for us, to not only, as Dave has mentioned, bring us into compliance with CalPERS that requires we have publicly available and adopted salary ranges, but to begin the process of our full classification study. So the consultant, Bruce Lawson, who you've met, has performed with his staff, classification review, using a decision-band methodology that looks at objectivity in terms of our executive staff. Excuse me. And part of the reason we had to do this study is not only because our salaries were not competitive with the labor market, but because we're facing combined job classifications, and we will have turnover at the executive level going forward. So in keeping with your direction, we presented a study in the form of a PowerPoint, which is available to the public, and Bruce is going to walk through the PowerPoint. If the council has any questions, please feel free to stop us during the presentation. But primarily, we're asking for you to select what salary ranges in the recommendation you would like, and adopt those in the form of a resolution, and then staff would take direction. This is the beginning of our class and comp recommendations to you. It will also set the tone for the remainder of all the classifications. But as the city manager, city attorney, city clerk salaries are set by the council, and Dave sets the rest of the executive staff in terms of recommendations for compensation, we can't get to the rest of the city until this part of the study is done. So no recommendations for placement are being made at this time, merely to adopt the structure. And I'll turn-- And I'll turn it over to Bruce Lawson, and we'll walk you through the PowerPoint, which you should have on the dais.
Quick question. Instead of it's either this or either that one, appreciating that we have a compliance issue, which I understand is pretty recent, that PERS now wants to establish ranges, if that was our singular goal, was to establish ranges, these classifications, then, and let's say the council didn't want to grant compensation increases, then could you take the current compensation levels and work backwards and establish a range?
So I'm just thinking through to make sure I under-
Sure.
So I think I understand your question. The current salaries structure that the city has for a lot of these jobs is about 22% wide. The problem is when we look at the market, the market rates for executive-level jobs are typically at least 50% wide. In some cases, they're substantially wider than that. So from a, just from a structural standpoint, building off of what you have now would not be anything other than a very short-term solution and would not solve some of the problems that the city's had over the last several months as it's hired and replaced some of its executive-level positions.
Okay. What you're referring to is sort of a market kind of an issue. I'm just talking about strict compliance, because that's been sort of brought up as a reason that we're doing this.
The only issue is what's the basis of building a new structure? If we could simply just take the current salaries and simply say, well, let's add plus or minus 10%, or 20%, or 30% off of those salaries to build a range, absolutely, you could do that. The only question is, are those current levels appropriate, and would the structure then really be reflective of what you want to do going forward? And since we're in the process of now looking at the overall classification system for the entire city, this lays a foundation for building the rest of the structure. So to do that without doing it, without looking at all the different elements, would create a foundation that is not as strong as I would think you'd want it to be. Go ahead. Thank you. The, I think I mentioned the last time I had the pleasure of visiting with you, we use a tool called the Decision-Ban Method of Job Evaluation that looks at jobs based on the level of authority, the level of responsibility that's placed in it. The jobs are then broken into some subsets, but it gives us the ability to look at the relative internal value of jobs, and also to look at how jobs compare in the outside world. The council, about a year or so ago, adopted a pay philosophy that identified public sector employers that you compete with. We were also asked to take a look at the private sector to the degree that it was appropriate. And while the numbers that we've used in building the recommendations are based off of the public sector numbers, the reason we did not incorporate the private sector numbers is for this level of job, there's the old adage of be careful what you ask for, because the private sector numbers would have distorted these numbers substantially and caused them, in some cases, to be substantially greater than we've proposed. We've tried to build a basic structure that reflects the market that you are competing with, which is predominantly public sector, recognizing that there are private sector issues that have to be looked at. When we get into the other jobs, we do know that there will be substantially greater private sector impacts. From a market standpoint, at the level that we're talking about, the upper end of the structure, while the base salaries might be somewhat similar to what we would expect to see in the private sector, we had a conversation, as I recall, last time I was here, talking about incentive compensation, and we're talking some very small percentages here, 5% to 10% potential incentives. I think most people that understand the private sector incentive plans, at the top levels, those numbers exceed substantially 5% to 10% of base pay as targets, so.
Often in the range of 50% to 100%.
That's correct. Yeah. Most of the plans we design have a bonus opportunity or an incentive opportunity that would be potentially double an employee's base compensation. So that's the reason why these numbers are tied to the public sector market initially. At some point, you may want to expand that, but we thought it was the more prudent approach. The ratings for the job, because we were looking solely at the executive group, this becomes the foundational structure. We deal, as I said, within decision-banning, and I don't want to go into a lot of detail unless you'd like me to, but basically, all of the jobs fall into what we call three bands. F-band jobs are those jobs that affect the overall goal, scope, and direction of the organization, in this case, the city. And of the employee population, the city manager is the only job in that category. The council, of course, would clearly fall in there and would go into a category that we would call an F-11 if we were showing that. The senior management group is a band E, and then band D has, there are some management jobs, there's one here, that fall into that category, where the programs are largely spelled out by statute or charter, and the employee has some latitude there. But those are the different categories, and then the numbers at the end basically just show the hierarchy. And it's just, it's a means of figuring out how one job ought to compare to another on an internal basis. We go through some-
I have a question for you, if that's okay?
Sure.
So I was looking through your decision bands, and what that results in then is that, you know, for example, let's take a couple here, the public works director and the finance director would make the same, the librarian and the rec director would make the same. Those are just some examples. So we wouldn't have, for example, eight different positions and eight different salaries. We would actually have, I think, you're down to three, among our executive ranks, there would be about three or four salaries.
Three to four, yes, salary ranges. The individuals may not make the same, the exact same salary, but they would be in a salary range that would be equivalent.
Okay. And then how do you marry that with the fact that within these survey cities, there are different salaries? So for example, a rec director, if you take six different cities and you go to a median, it's different than the number that you have here, same for all of these positions. So we're sort of using these comparable cities, but then we're using bands that constrain within a couple of things.
The answer to your question is actually shown on this graph. What we've tried to do is plot out, just to graphically show you what the market is saying in terms of the internal equity, looking at the different jobs that have been rated differently. The market is not a, this is not like going down to the gas station and finding everybody paying within two or three cents a gallon for gasoline. Salary ranges that are potentially 50% apart from minimum to maximum, there's going to be a fairly wide divergence of what individual employers are paying. It's also an issue of how, the tenure of people, their performance, a number of issues that come into play. What we're trying to figure out is, on balance, what is the trend, what should be the minimum, what should be the maximum rates of pay? And what we have ascertained is that this placement of jobs, all of your existing executives fall within the structure, some are going to be a little bit below the market median, some are going to be a little bit above. We're not gauging individual performance. We don't know why people might be where they are. Some people are new in their jobs, some people have been here a long time. And ultimately, decisions are going to have to be made as to where people belong in that range. We're just simply saying that, on balance, these minimums and these maximums are reflective of the 50th percentile or the 60th, depending on how we calculate the numbers, if you want to have a pay structure that reflects what other employers are doing for jobs that are structured in a similar fashion. The other component is that each organization structures jobs a little bit differently. And some of your department heads will perform multiple functions, in other agencies, they may only have one function, and there's going to be a number of those differences that exist. What we're looking for, and these are spelled out by federal guidelines that we have to follow, when we do surveys, there has to be at least a 70% match, or we can't use the data. So the jobs, in general terms, look and feel like the other organizations. Are they exact? Absolutely not.
Another thing, I spent a great deal of time with it because the city was closed yesterday, Monday, rather, kind of had to do some of my own research on it. And I noticed from what we pay currently, I use that as a benchmark, and then I looked at some of the ranges, I mean, unless I'm incorrect and have analyzed this incorrectly, it looks like some double-digit increases with those positions.
It's important to point out, we're not recommending, and it's my understanding that the staff is not recommending any increase to any individual. All this, the analogy that I would use is that we've laid, designed a new house. The moving van is showing up at the door, you've got 13 boxes that you're going to move into the house. This just puts them into the right room without doing any reupholstering or anything else. And at some point, if the council adopts the incentive option, you're going to have to figure out, what is the appropriate criteria for pay advancements? How are people going to get moved? But at this particular point, regardless of where people fit, there is absolutely no new cost to the city by moving any of these employees into the structure.
Right. One of my concerns, though, is that when you authorize at a level that's, you know, in some cases, quite significantly above the current compensation as an employer, you know, we can't have people in an authorized salary range making less than that. I mean, we really have to be responsible, have good practices, and fund the new ranges. We can't adopt something that, this is your salary, but by the way, we're not going to fund it, and we expect you to be working at 20% less. So realistically, although budgets follow, that's a concern that I have, is that authorization really leads to the additional steps of making the employee whole.
If I might, Bruce, and Dave, maybe you can clarify. The direction from council was to set a new structure in place that would allow for flexibility moving forward and would bring us into current pay practices for both addressing current employees and future employees. When you do this once every 100 years, which is the last time we did a comprehensive classification and compensation study, what we're trying to do is set an objective set of criteria using the DBM method, but also using public agencies that are comparable to the City of Newport Beach. We're not saying that any individual is going to realize the compensation that the range permits. But as some of them, especially the higher-level positions, were capped and have not been adjusted in years, should you go out and recruit or bring in people under the current salary structure, that might dissuade candidates from thinking that the City of Newport Beach is someplace they would want to come because we're not competitive. It does not direct that anything be different. There are three or four of our executives who, because they were newly hired or because of COLAs that were not adjusted as a group, the salary ranges have fallen outside of your current parameters. And the compliance issue is important because PERS figures compensation on a council-adopted salary range basis, and so some people are falling slightly outside of that. It's important that we be in compliance, but it's also important that we set up this structure so that we don't have to do it more frequently, and that it is merit-based, and the structure permits, based on performance and time and grade, adjustments be made. When you establish a range that is 50% wide, the placement can be different percentages. It doesn't have to be lockstep, a 5%, it could be a 2%. Or you could bring someone into this structure without having to give additional benefits or leaves because you're basing it on your philosophy, which is now based on total compensation. So it does not recommend anything in terms of advancing people, but most of our employees are at the top of their current ranges, some are new hires, and they're looking forward to staying longer because compensation is important to them going forward. Dave?
So I'd make a couple of additional points. This is a very standard approach. It's been well-practiced, it's ground well-plowed for a long time, you know, in the executive compensation industry. But it's a myopic approach from the standpoint that it only considers salary. We've, for a long time now, well, since the adoption of the total compensation philosophy, we've been focused on total compensation. And when, because this city has moved forward faster and more aggressively than most in terms of pension contribution requirements from our employee group, our employees would lose ground in these studies, and we see that when we see individual survey results, on a total compensation basis. So what that does is place pressure on the salary end of it to have a program that does allow for flexibility to both hire and retain high performers, and to have some amount of flexibility to deal with this non-salary compensation issue. You know, I designed and implemented compensation systems for two Fortune 500 companies, and in neither case did I have a result like this, where when we finished the classification survey, there were no anomalies. That's really pretty unusual, perhaps not as unusual in public sector. But I've never had a case where we didn't have green circles and red circles. Green circles, people that were currently paid below the bottom of the range, and what do you do about that? And people who were paid above the top of the range, and what do you do about that? Those are difficult decisions to wrestle with. We don't have any of that here. So apparently, we haven't been doing such a bad job with our compensation as we've gone along, and so these ranges that we're establishing here don't require any special action. There's no mandated action to change anyone's compensation coming out of this. It may well be that if somebody is at the top of the current range, and we've established a higher range, that will result in some flexibility for compensation to go up that might have been more difficult to justify previously. But presumably, that pressure would only be actionable if it could be shown that that individual's compensation was below market or, in some respect, inappropriate. So I think we've still got, you know, checks and balances in the system here, and I'm not, although I think there is some, you know, substance to what your concern is, I think there are checks and balances, and a well-managed system can avoid excess.
Would you mind a few examples to sort of see how this would play out? Like, just take a couple of positions.
I'd certainly, go ahead, and I'll try and answer as best I can.
And this may not even be yours. This is the one we got. It shows 60%.
Yeah. We've got the charts in here. You're on the 60th percentile?
Yeah. This is one example.
Yeah. We've got the slide. Here's the 60th percentile. And this would show what the minimum would be, and what this particular chart is designed to show is, based on the rating of the job, what the salary structure minimum would be, what the midpoint of the range would be, and what the maximum. And then, when we run the regression analysis, the structural model, there are some potential numbers that would be a little bit different. So, for example, the, well, you'll see, they're not exactly aligned, because it is a mathematical smoothing of the data.
Let me see if I can draw a real live example, just using the data in front of us tonight.
Sure.
The last agenda item here has an item for increase in compensation for the city manager and the city clerk. Looking at the city clerk, which is the more extreme example, we're being asked to approve an increase of roughly $13,000 in her salary. That would take her to just shy of the DBM midpoint there.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So although that's a rather significant increase, it still places her at about the midpoint of the range. And it's very clear that the midpoint of the range for the Newport midpoint was low because we're looking at actual salary survey information for city clerks, which would indicate that, in fact, the range ought to be around 123 or 124 for the midpoint, in a real live situation with a more extreme example of compensation change.
And it also reflects the fact that your current structure is so narrow relative to the market.
Right.
Okay. So maybe we can take an example. There's, if you look at the DBM, if you look at the Newport midpoint of any of those, most of those positions, it's lower than the DBM midpoint.
That's correct.
Pretty significantly. Pretty significantly.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's, again, that's a, that's a factor, or driven largely by the fact that your current ranges, as they exist, are about twenty-two percent wide. These would be fifty percent wide. So your midpoint is going from somewhere in, in the middle, roughly, where there's an eleven percent plus or minus number, to a number that would have twenty-five percent plus or minus, and that's gonna reflect a sizable difference.
Okay, so if you go to DBM maximum, so that's a ceiling, that's a fixed point in both, it's not the middle of a range.
Absolutely.
If you look at Newport maximum and, and DBM maximum, you're looking at, in some cases, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars in difference.
From a structural standpoint, and, and again, it's important to emphasize, from our standpoint, we're looking at jobs, we're not looking at people.
Right.
I have absolutely no idea, I mean, if I looked at my sheets, I would know what everybody's making, but in reality, I don't know what any of these incumbent employees' or, their current salary is, and for our, from our standpoint, it's not the issue. The issue is the structure. If you believe that, when you do, or when the city manager does performance reviews of the department heads, when you do the performance review of your appointees, you will make the appropriate judgment as to where, within that range, those employees ought to be paid. And it's designed to reflect the realities of the world. That's, that's all it is doing. This is not designed to say that any employee ought to get a pay raise tomorrow. I know you're doing separate actions on individual positions, but my understanding is you would be taking those, those same actions with or without this, this particular process going on.
And although it's not part of this study, we are in tandem looking at revising our evaluation system, which is also outdated, and that would be the companion piece, that these increases would be based on performance, both performance on, set on targets or goals and objectives, as well as our current or future evaluation system, not without an objective evaluation piece.
Yeah, the, you know, the fundamental issue here is that if, if we have a very high-performance executive who happens to be paid above median, let's say even at the seventy-fifth percentile, for a very high-performance executive, I don't think we should feel bad about that.
I would certainly agree with that statement.
Because to go out and find a comparable, very high-performance executive, you're likely going to pay that, or maybe more, to get him to come to work for you, even in the public sector. So, you know, these, that's, these ranges provide flexibility to arrive at what we believe is the correct answer. That's what we're talking about here, is flexibility to arrive at the correct answer. And conversely, there may be occasions where the correct answer is below the mean, below the median, because you have an employee that is very new to the job, just recently promoted, perhaps even below par performer. So you shouldn't feel bad about that employee being paid less than the median. So all of these things depend upon the whole mix of individual performance, experience, et cetera, as to where they should fall in the range. The range does not command the answer.
Exactly. I'll be happy, I mean, if it's easier, we can, I can either continue to go through or we can just, I can address questions, whatever is your pleasure as a council.
I would like you to talk about the page number eight.
Okay.
That, that particular graph, or have you described it?
On the side. The, this particular graph shows, the, the bars reflect the minimum, the proposed min, minimum and maximum for the structure. The, the dots in the column reflect the current salaries of the incumbents that would be in those ranges, and the bars reflect the parameters of the current ranges that are assigned to those jobs today. So that will give you an indication. Now that you'll notice that there are four, three or four bars that have no positions in them. Those are simply placeholders in the future. You may or may not have jobs that you, where you'll need those for all intents, they're, they're still there, but the bars that have shaded area are, areas where there are established ranges and the incumbent's current salary.
Okay, well, that's, that's a much, the one, the copy we had doesn't look much like that, so that's very, very helpful in clarifying.
I, I just wanted to clarify that, so this chart shows that there is, and Terry, and, or, you can correct me if I'm wrong, this chart shows that there is no current employee on the management level that would be, that at today's salary is outside of the proposed range. Is that correct?
There's one that looks like one that's close.
Close, but.
But not outside.
Right, that's correct. There's one, one that is at the very top.
Okay, but nobody is below a range that automatically would get an increase by the adoption of these ranges?
Correct.
You mean outside the range?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are there other questions or comments? You wanna see the rest of this, or things that you feel would be helpful?
Well, I, I don't feel like we need to go through the whole presentation.
You don't. Maybe some of the rest of it do.
I'm, I'm happy to be patient.
Everybody all right with it? Okay, all right. Just, any further questions then?
I did have some questions.
Sure.
So, you know, the fundamental issue before us, the way you've cast it at least, is, on the one hand, we could select ranges with a midpoint at the fiftieth percentile, or ranges, we could, we could have a range at, selected at the fiftieth percentile and tack onto that, if we wished, an incentive compensation program that would allow for payment based on performance at higher than fiftieth percentile.
Separate from the range itself, yes.
Or if we, that's right, or if we decided we didn't wanna fiddle around with incentive compensation and performance measurement like that, we could go alternatively with a sixtieth percentile midpoint. But in both cases, this fifty percent, this wider range to allow flexibility.
That's correct.
So, you know, my, my preference is to pay for performance and to not lock in, to your point, a, a structure that, in effect, encourages you to pay above median without some assurance of performance above median. So where I'm at is, fiftieth percentile for the structure, but to allow an incentive compensation program for, to, to provide for those that do perform, the ability to earn above median. The problem that I have is, four, five, six percent incentive comp potentials are not very meaningful in terms of incentivizing performance. And I understand that this is public sector, it's not private sector, we gotta make a big shift on that, but still, four, five, six percent is not enough to me to move the dial, to move the needle. And so if it were me, I'd recommend that we go with the fifty percent, fiftieth percentile ranges, but come back with a recommendation for at least a ten percent bonus target or bonus potential. And I'm not so concerned about where that puts, puts us in terms of the percentile. I'm, I'm pretty sure that keeps us within the ranges you've established and probably doesn't pop us over the seventy-fifth percentile, except in, maybe in some rare cases, a few rare cases. But it, it at least provides an incentive comp level that is of significance. And then, if you were to do that, you'd need to come back with some guidelines about how we establish performance measurement for purposes of the bonus.
Absolutely. I, yeah, there's two separate components. Obviously, progression within the salary range ought to be based on doing the job that people were hired to do, being paid at the, what we call the job rate, the middle of the range, the market median, whatever term you're comfortable with, ought to reflect a person who is fully performing the body of work that they were hired to do.
Right.
The question then is how, making certain that the employer, in this case, the city of Newport Beach, can define what is the expectation for all of these jobs. And that puts a burden on management to define the expectations, and it puts a burden on council to define for the city manager and cascading down. Once that's done, then it becomes very easy to, to figure out what goes beyond, what is really something that is performance above and beyond the expectation, and.
And you only pay incentive comp for performance above expectation.
Exactly.
I have, I have a question on that, on, bonus, how is that counted? Does that count anything towards pension and that sort of thing, or is that?
No. It can be done as a percentage, but paid as a flat rate. Some agencies do tack it on, in which case, if it was a sustained, ongoing percentage, it would become PERS-able. In order to keep it outside of the PERS rules, it would be better to do it as a flat rate one-time payment.
And then, in terms of competition with others, does this become more or less attractive to someone who says, oh, I can get a better raise here, perhaps, which goes to my pension? Here, I might get a good bonus, but it's just gonna be cash in hand. Is that, you think that's a factor in hiring?
I'm, I'm not in the search business, but I, I mean, I can talk to it, but I would prefer that the city manager at least respond based on his experience.
I was gonna offer honey baked hams. You know, I, I think it's gonna depend on the job and the employee. I think in, in some cases, people will look to the one-time thing, and other times, they'll look for the higher salary and the, the longer, the distribution of that, making that PERS-able. But I think in our setup, I would certainly prefer the one-time incentive. I think it's appropriate.
And then, from what you said, there are cities that are already doing this?
There are several cities that are already doing this, but as the PERS rules are changing under the pension reform, and there's going to be a cap on compensation in order to lower the hundred thousand dollar and up pensions, cities are doing away with some of their percentage tack-ons because it becomes less, less of an incentive toward retirement and looking for other creative ways. But yes, we have three or four different kinds of plans. Should we want to come back with, define some other options for you to consider?
Thank you. Councilman Hen, you had more?
Well, then, let's.
All right, Councilman Zalich, I know, if you had the slides still on.
Well, it was tied into what you're talking about, so. I like the idea of the, of the merit-based incentive, but I'm having a hard time visualizing how it would work. Can you give me a hypothetical example of how some cities do this?
Well, I'm, the one that, it's probably not a perfect fit, but it's the closest that I can think of, just off the top of my head. Four years ago, I designed a plan for a very small school district to the north of here called Los Angeles Unified. Some of you may have been familiar with it. They, a few years ago, passed a bond issue, the multiple billions of dollars, and part of that bond measure required that all of the, the jobs that were created be compensated relative to both the combination of the public and the private sector, which meant they had to design a new pay plan that was not traditional school district type of compensation or government administration. So we designed an incentive plan for all the construction and engineering types of jobs, where there was a base, there was a, a target bonus. The target bonuses were linked to the capital improvement programs, the completion on schedule, on budgets, and all of the things that tied to the, the capital improvement programs. The, the percentages, I think the bonus opportunity was, as I recall, was in that ten to, ten to twenty percent maximum opportunity, but most were gonna be in the five to ten percent opportunity. But it was all linked to accomplishment of very specific goals that were spelled out statutorily in their case.
Mayor Potam Curry?
Well, I'm a big believer in incentive compensation. I came out of the finance industry where seventy-five to eighty percent of compensation is incentive-based. But here, we have, you know, ten or so department heads, and how do we avoid the Lake Wobegon syndrome where everybody's above average? And how do we develop the kind of criteria that would justify that kind of a, of a year-to-year annual recognition?
And I, I struggle with the same issue, so if, if this is approved with the fifty percent with the incentive, we'll take a hard look at it with Fox Lawson and, and come back with a, with a plan that is workable. But yeah, right now, there's a vacuum and.
Well, I think part of that is, is, would be tied in with what we've done is for the meets expectations, which people think, oh, that's ordinary, but it's not. Meets expectations means you've done a good job. You've done the job you were hired to do, and you've done it well. And then we have exceeds expectations, where that's where all of a sudden you start to talk about, I would think, incentives. But you have to get to that exceeds, you're just doing your job that you're hired for, that's, that's not, doesn't qualify.
And your counsel has talked about better performance management, and that certainly would be a tool for us to evaluate a department head and department performance on. Right now, we're not there yet, but, you know, we hope to be there soon, and that may give an additional tool for that.
Councilman Zalich, you had another comment?
So if we adopt this fifty percent with the merit-based incentive, and then you work on the program, and we don't like the program, we can always come back and do the sixty percent program.
That's right.
Because I'm still kind of.
I am too, yeah.
Fuzzy about how this is gonna work.
No, actually, the, the merit side of it, I, I would like to bring back to you with some fleshing out of how that would work, because that'll help us all talk it through and figure it out.
Councilman Hill?
Question, I assume that when we talk about the fiftieth percentile or the sixtieth, that that includes base plus merit?
It's cash compensation. When we, when we look at the market, the numbers that we're looking at are what other employers are paying on the cash side of the house.
Yeah, so it would include the total of the.
If they're doing, if, if one of those other employers was, is paying a bonus or paying an incentive, that's factored into their cash number that was used for, in the calculation.
So does the fiftieth percentile narrow your bracket, or is it just slide the bracket?
It just slides it. The, the, the market number is the market number. It's just where the city of Newport Beach is relative to the other twelve cities, are you gonna be number, basically, number, number five and a half, or, or six, or right in that, or are you gonna be number seven in the, in the hierarchy, is what it really comes down to?
Maybe we should put it at sixty, because it's possible that it's both.
Councilman Hen?
Okay, so let me throw one more wrinkle at you here, and that is that it's frequently the case in incentive compensation programs that the payout is bifurcated or in some way hinged such that a portion of it is deferred as to payment.
That is correct, in some cases.
And so therefore, the incentive comp program becomes also a retention program. Because if the payment is deferred and you have to be an employee in good standing when it's due to be paid at a later date, it makes you think twice about listening to somebody about going to work somewhere else because there is a, because there is a disincentive, you know, for leaving the employer that you're with. So I guess if it were me, I would, it's, yeah, golden handcuffs is a way to put it. If it were me, I'd say, come back with an incentive comp program that identifies bonus potential, and if you think it's appropriate, and if there is other application out there you see where a portion of that incentive comp target would be deferred in payment two years or three years down the line, whatever it might be, that may affect the total bonus potential too, that you would consider granting. And along with that, then, guidance for us about how you would structure the performance measurements that would allow for an incentive payment, because I agree with that. I don't think we wanna buy the idea of incentive comp unless we have some confidence that it can be administered correctly.
Just a couple of quick points on, on that exact issue. Multi-year payouts really end up tying back to long-term incentives as opposed to short-term. So it depends, when we design the plan, clearly, you can, you have certain goals that you wanna see achieved or exceeded in, for a single year. But if there's gonna be, if, if the intent is to have some long-term, then we have to start looking at things like rolling averages over multiple years and, and then the payouts linking back to that. So as long as you're open to that, it's, it's not a difficult task to design them, but it, it does add the complexity of having both short-term and long-term incentives built into the system for the various levels.
Well, I don't wanna challenge this too far, but I, but I wish you would think about that at least.
Oh, absolutely. It's, quite frankly, I'm delighted that you're, you're raising the issue, because normally, we don't have councils asking about multi-year. Their, the issue is short-term, and that's, that's. The issue is short-term, and that's as far as people want to go. So, I'm delighted. I think it's a great idea.
All right. Any other questions from council? All right. Any public comment on this item?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As the city attorney often observes, I'm frequently confused about things, and I'm, this is one of the things I'm confused about. On Sunday, I actually looked on our city website, and I found that we do currently have in place a webpage called Salary Schedules that gives the range of pay available for every city position, including all the executives that are listed here. And in fact, those are the source of the numbers that are listed in the staff report as the Newport minimum and the Newport maximum. So, one of the things I'm confused about is whether the compliance problem is that those salary ranges for our executives have not previously been approved by you, the city council, as is required by our city charter? Or is the compliance problem that some of our employees are outside those ranges? Slide five in this presentation, which I don't think we looked at, indicates that the police chief is apparently outside the range that we currently have on our website. I don't know if that's the problem or what it is. As to the so-called methodology that's used here in this report, as a trained scientist, I really have to say that this decision-band numbers that are listed in the staff report strike me as pseudoscience. As best I can tell, the recommended salary ranges are based simply on what is paid for the same jobs in other cities, without any clear explanation of how one accounts for the different sizes and natures of the cities and the levels of experience of the people in them. And then, to whatever that median comes out, a rather arbitrary decision has been made at a range of 20% above and below the observed median. Even if one could magically rank the difficulty of jobs independent of what people are being paid for them, I wouldn't expect the result to come out in a perfectly linear fashion as Fox Lawson seems to expect. So, the fact that it does come out that way suggests to me only that the pseudoscientific rating numbers have been manipulated to achieve a preconceived result. And I'm also really puzzled by this graph that the mayor called our attention to, which is slide number eight in the presentation, because it has these light boxes here, which say that they're the proposed salary ranges. And I see 13 different, none of them the same, salary ranges, yet as Councilman Daigle pointed out, when you look at the numbers that are apparently being tabulated here, the DBM minimum and maximum, there are only six distinct ranges. And I don't understand how there can be six distinct ranges and then 13 when you plot them. So, there's something a little phony about this report. Beyond that, I'm not sure why we really need a consultant to do this. I would have thought our own human resources staff could have conducted such a survey or found a survey conducted by another city and reported the results back to you. And I also don't understand what you're supposed to do with the results, because as Councilman Hen pointed out, the decisions that people make as to where they want to work are based not just on base salary, but on the total compensation, including the benefits, and also intangible factors. It might perhaps just be possible that it's more pleasant or attractive for people to work for the city of Newport Beach than some other city. So, I would basically recommend that you, apparently, you do have an obligation under either the charter or state law to set salary employee ranges, but I would suggest you basically just ignore the report and set the ranges to what you think is necessary based on your experience to attract and retain a quality staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, then, do I have a motion?
I'll move. That we adopt the 50th percentile range with an incentive compensation program to be proposed back to us. I'm, I guess I would leave it up to the consultants, but I would hope that we could design a program with at least a 10% incentive comp component, and, but I'll leave it up to the consultant to decide what's reasonable. And then, but to include with that some specific examples of how performance measurements might be structured, you know, that we, that would be used then to determine what the payouts would be. So, I think you know what I'm talking about.
And did that include either vesting or multi-year?
Well, I guess what I'd like you to do is come back to us with some thought about some sort of a deferred payout program. Either a deferral of the short-term incentive, which I realize is a little bit violative of your ordinary practice, but, you know, to go all the way from where we are to both a short and long-term incentive comp program is a pretty big reach. So, anyway, if you have some ideas, I'd be grateful.
Yes, I heard. Councilman Daigle?
I think specific examples are always good. It isn't always easy to digest this, these reports. However, the consultant mentioned the word cash. And when I looked at your numbers, and I appreciate all the research that you did, when you look at the cash at midpoint, from what we currently pay to the, these percentiles, and you look at the ceiling, it's, you know, it's significant increases. So, I think that I would not be supporting it based on that.
All right, thank you. Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the resolution number, or title, Resolution Number 2012-100, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, Adopting Salary Ranges for Non-Represented Executive Management Employees at the 50th Percentile. With Councilmember Daigle voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Thank you. And now, to item number 16, the employment agreements. Are we taking these separately or together?
I did prepare resolutions to have the items separate.
All right. So, the first is for the city manager. Are there any comments, questions on this item?
A well-deserved raise.
Is there public comment on this item? For some reason, you sit over in the corner, she's just sitting right there.
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. With your permission, I'll comment on both resolutions at the same time. There are too many things that bother me about these restated contracts with the city manager and the city clerk. The first is, I see nothing in the staff report to explain to us, the public, how the amounts of the raises were arrived at. That's probably much more obvious to you than it is to us, because your performance reviews are conducted in closed session. So, we, the public, really have no idea if you set goals for these two employees for the last three years and whether they met or exceeded those goals. So, some explanation of that might be in order. The real thing that bothers me is, we just heard some talk about bonuses, but is this so-called one-time merit payments, they're included in these revised contracts? The merit payment to be given in addition to the raises, and they sound to me a lot like bonuses. And incidentally, I wanted to point out that in the written comments I submitted, I miscalculated or misstated by a factor of five what the potential bonuses that are being offered are, because I multiplied by weeks instead of days. And it appears the city manager is being offered a $5,000 one-time bonus and the city clerk a $12,500 bonus, or something in that ballpark, which effectively makes these raises retroactive for the last year. Now, Councilman Hen was making the proposal that in the future, people would be offered an incentive system, and there's probably nothing wrong with that. But in the present case, I, looking through the existing contract and the existing city policies, I can see nothing that one does that makes one eligible for a bonus. And the problem is there are state, California state constitution prohibits giving extra pay for work that's already been performed. It stated in no uncertain terms that you can't do that, giving extra money as regarded as a gift of funds, and I don't think, a gift of public funds, and I don't think you have the power to do that. It would be fine if the contracts had said, "You do X, Y, Z, and you get a bonus." I just, I can't find it in there. Since this is the public's money, at least in my view, if you want to give bonuses, you need to put that in the contracts so that the employees and the public and you will know what the rules are. In this case, I don't think we know what the rules are, and I don't think we should be doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Did you get all the public comment?
Oh, is there other public comment?
I'll second.
All right. Please vote on the city manager's contract.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the resolution. Resolution Number 2012-99, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, Approving the Amended and Restated Employment Agreement for the City Manager. With that, with Councilmember Daigle abstaining, the motion ca, oh. Okay. She's voting yes. But, no. Okay, do it again, council.
All right.
With council, with everyone voting yes, the motion carries unanimously.
All right. And now, moving on to the city clerk's contract. Are there any comments from council on this? Councilman Zansky?
No, but another well-deserved raise, and it only brings her to the median as we saw earlier, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move the item.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any public comment? Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, Resolution Number 2012-101, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, Approving the Amended and Restated Employment Agreement for the City Clerk. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right. Motion for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with a prevailing side.
All right. And now, we are going to adjourn in memory of Ray Watson. Mr. Watson was born in Seattle in 1926. He graduated Berkeley with an MA in architecture, and in 1960, he became the chief of planning for the Irvine Company. And he, his vision and his work is largely responsible for the city of Irvine, because it was William Ferrera that came and said to the Irvine Company, "Give some money for a university." And then, once the university land was granted, it said, "Now, you've got to build a town around it. You've got to give something there." And he was very influential, that separate villages, each with its own character. Now, I know there are some of us who may question how much character Irvine has, but as he would say, he would say, "The proof is in the pudding. Look at all the people that live there." So, but certainly, for him, the crown jewel of the area was Woodbridge, which is a charming place. He was the president of the Irvine Company from 1973 to 1977, and the vice chair of the board for a number of years. And he also worked with Walt Disney, designing Epcot, and was briefly chair there, also chair of the Public Policy Institute of California. He is survived by his wife Elise and four children, Kathy Godwin, Brian Watson, Lisa Lambert, and David Watson, a sister, and 10 grandchildren. I do think, I mean, I think it's easy to make fun of Irvine because of all the homeowners associations and all the rules, but it is a remarkable achievement, because I grew up when there were just essentially beanfields there. And to see the university and all the various areas of Irvine is pretty impressive. So, we will certainly miss Mr. Watson, but he has made a great contribution to our county. And with that, we are adjourned.